Board meeting on Tuesday, July 21st will come to order. Our first item is a Form A. So Christine, can you tell us, I assume Mr. Willis is here, so we can probably, if you have any questions, we can ask him, but can you tell us what it is that we've received?
What we received was a lot line adjustment with two small parcels, kind of a trade-off due to the setback requirements of the leaching system. He's preparing for a sale of one lot and he wants to make sure the lot lines are appropriate for that sale.
If you have the, can you-
Yes, I'll put that up and Gene, Gene's here, he can speak to the project.
Good evening, Gene Willis, town engineer, but I'm here as a resident. My house is at 76 Boston Hill Road and it was a lot that we purchased, my wife and I purchased off my mother-in-law in 85 from that larger piece that you see that's Lot 3A. At the time, it didn't really matter where the lot lines were and as it turned out, the well we put on the property was on my mother-in-law's property, Lot 3A. So in January, we came before the board to get an A and R, which they approved, which adjusted the lot line to pick up the well. And now we've talked to a buyer and they saw the lot lines had been adjusted and they looked a little deeper and they wanted to see where the septic system was laid out. And as it turned out, it's a good thing they did, the adjustment we made did not account for the septic system layout. So fortunately, I had never made the parcel transfer A and B as it referenced in the old A and R because I just recorded the plan, but the plan was recorded. But there was never any deed transfers back and forth. Now we find out, and I think I included in the package, a little show that shows the leach field from the approved A and R that has been recorded, it shows the encroachment. And so now we've had to redo, yeah, if you can scan, you see I circled it in red, it's over to the right and down low, oh, it's not, it's not there.
I'm trying to see.
Okay, well, maybe I can show you.
You show them a little bit where the red is.
So this, this is, is the as-built septic system and this is the lot line, the A and R that had been approved to pick up the well that was in this area. So now when we overlay the as-built, the last leach field crossed over that new A and R plan. So I'm back in front of you with a second A and R plan, bringing this lot line down further. The same lot, I'm selling it, but now in order to get this encroachment totally on this lot, that's the purpose of this A and R.
Okay, go back to the-
The big, the regular A and R.
Yeah. And just blow it up a little bit.
And, oh.
So is what's supposed to remain is the dotted lines or the straight lines?
Can, can you hear me here? This dotted lines, these dotted lines was the original lot that my mother-in-law sold to my wife and I. The well was out here.
Well, I guess, no, I'm not worried about the well or anything. All I'm trying to do is look at this plan here that we have in front of us and is, the lot lines are what you want is what's in the dark color?
Correct.
Okay. So not the, the, the former lot lines were the dotted ones, now what you're doing is you're ending up with the solid line ones.
Correct.
Okay.
So that will require parcel A and B to be swapped back and forth between the lots because the original dotted line is the lot that was sold to me from my mother-in-law.
Right.
I just have one question about these lines. If you look at the top of this drawing, above the word Lot 4A, you can see there's a dotted line, which I assume was the original, and then a solid line above that, but that's also where there's a road widening easement. So how does that sliver of the lot work?
Okay, no, the original lot line is up on Boston Hill Road. It's the solid lot line. So when I had come in for the first A and R, speaking with Matt Egg, he said, "Well, if you widen out, the larger parcel," if you could widen out so they could see, "the larger parcel, 3A now, is not going to be in, Lot 4A is not going to be in that ownership." It would be good for the town to get a road widening easement through there if they needed it or not. I've been to the Board of Selectment and said, "Here's the easement that's showed to give to the town." They had some questions, I said, "Fine, whatever you guys want to do."
I think my only question is, on the top of this lot, is the new lot line, the dotted line?
No, the new lot line isn't changing, it's the solid lot line and that is Boston Hill Road.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, I, I think it's okay. I presume that you have the ownership of both lots to be able to swap the, so, I think it's fine. I mean, Paul Headstrom probably would have had a field day because he would have wanted you to put notes in there explaining what went from one went to the other, but I think it's pretty clear what you're, what you're doing there, so I think it's okay.
The note's right on there, John.
No, the only thing I have is, when you did it the last time, what did you call the lots? Did you call them 3A and 4A?
No, we called it Lot 4.
Okay.
And that plan was recorded, I have the recording number.
Okay, since it was recorded, yeah, I just think of-
It was 4A. And I talked to the surveyor and he said, "Because there was no parcels exchanged or transferred, then that plan pretty much stands out there and really doesn't do anything. It's a recorded plan, but nothing has happened with the title." So now when I record this plan, I will definitely make sure the lawyer deets those parcels A and B and we also affect that, which I didn't know at the time, I thought just recording the plan did it, but-
That'd be nice.
Well, no, in this case, it was, it was, it was a good thing it didn't, because now it's a lot simpler.
So, okay, so I, I think the motion would be to recommend that the planner sign off on the Form A plan presented here tonight, that-
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good.
No, you can bring that to the office in a Gene time. Oh, yes, that'd be fine, that would be fine.
All right. Hey, Gene, can you hang for a few seconds because we're going to do the lot release here, so, put your other hat on here, so, yeah. Okay, Christine, what, where do we stand on this one? I remember-
In your folder, in your packet, you have an agenda, the next sheet in there should be the letter that's gone back and forth, we've been resolving some issues, and we finally have what you guys were looking for, the spreadsheet from DPW and the lot release for the whole subdivision, and I have some Form Js for signature for the lots. And let me pull up that on the computer. But the numbers did change as you anticipated. You might want to see, I'm not sure what, I'm going to put up the lot plan right now, just to refresh everybody.
Remember, they were asking for a release of three lots?
This would be for all the lots.
Yeah, yeah, this covers all the lots, okay.
If, if DPW is satisfied that this covers all the remaining work and protects the town's interests completely and completely covers everything, then there's no reason not to release all the lots.
Within the road right way and what the acceptance is, I don't know what's kind of going on on conservation outside of that, but as far as the road construction and the infrastructure, I don't know if there's other things out there, but in order for that road to come to the town, should I be listening?
Yes, we're filming the people at home.
Okay.
So our, our review is, in order for that road to come to town for town acceptance, then we can construct that road and its infrastructure and stormwater stuff to bring it to a point where I can recommend a town meeting that it get accepted. I can't say the whole subdivision, this bond will cover every, I don't know what else is going on, but I've looked at the road construction, the bounds, the swales, the, the stormwater infrastructure, the tonnage of pavement, et cetera, et cetera. I have those numbers in there, but I can't say that this covers everything in the subdivision because I don't know what that is.
Are there, in this one, are there any drainage structures outside of the right away?
There are a few infrastructures on private lot, but I feel comfortable with the bonding amount that I'm asking to, that they will be built. I think that number originally was zero and I put it at 10,000.
Okay.
So basically, something that I asked for the, add to the agenda is that, this is the DPW number, we need to come up with a schedule for our provisions, the as-bills for the personal homes, the, you know, the items that are not street acceptance issues. Because that's where we get-
Well, you're right, I mean, we don't typically do as-bills for the individual homes.
Well, there's rain gardens on the prop, on the sites.
Unless there's something that's embedded in our decision, like in the case of, you know, the infamous one that we had, that there was a swell that we said was constructed and apparently with the homeowner, unconstructed and then they created drainage problems, so.
Typically, when I see those, I request easements to the town over those type of things.
Yeah.
So any easements that are shown on the plan, I'm good with that that will get built.
What happens at the end is if the DPW says all the work's been done, we release the bond, we release the bond because it's the DPW's numbers. We release it based on their numbers and then it leaves us with zero.
I did also bump up the, the legal transfer number, which had been like $2,000, or legal acceptance or something, towards the end of the last page, I bumped that number up too.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't recollect any situations where we run into a major problem where we've, we've run into problems in cases where it turned out the work cost more to do than we thought it was going to do, but that's occasionally can happen, sometimes on hillsides, but I don't think that that is the situation here.
Well, I would like, I would like to mention that fact that I think these numbers are totally reasonable for the developer to do the work, but as you know, if the town comes in, we're Davis Bacon, we're union wage, I can't say that the town could do this work for that, but I'm very comfortable that the developer, it would make sense for the developer to do this work in order to get that money back. If, God forbid, the developer went bust, if another developer came in, he could get the work done. But based on the constraints put upon us by the legislature, the DPW, the bids, the posted rate and everything, the DPW could probably not do the, that work for that number. But-
That wouldn't be a problem.
That's, that's an interesting concept, but he's right, it's probably-
The private sector can do work way cheaper than we can.
You can hire them.
And it's unrea, I think it's unreasonable to ask a developer to post that money. I think we're thinking here that the developer's going to go forward, he's going to do it and he's going to want to get his money back, he's going to, we're going to have, want to have more money there because he's going to do $5,000 worth of work to get $6,000 back and I'm comfortable with that, but if something happens and the $5,000 worth of work that the developer can do and we have $6,000 worth of bond, I'm not sure that the DPW could do it for 6,000, but I don't think that's fair to put that upon a developer. And basically, it's to make sure he's going to do the work to get his money back and I feel comfortable that we have more money than it's going to cost him. I'm not comfortable that we have enough money that we could do it for that. And that's something we're up against all the time, trying to put a drain pipe in the road, it's killing us, but that's the state legislature, you know.
Just one question. Is there any legal standing to the worksheet that was developed that says, "Okay, they've done this item and it wasn't finished," but this item wasn't finished and we give him back the amount for the first item, but not, but the second item costs three times more than what it was. Can we hold the whole bond until all the work is done?
We could, but I don't think that's fair either. Usually, usually on a construction project, what you'd do is you'd release, you know, you'd pay 90% of it and you'd hold retainage. I, I think that's a more comfortable way of doing it, say, this is 77,000, the developer comes in and says they completed line item 1, 2, and 3, as you hold maybe a retainage of 10% on those items.
But Gene, that does not protect us in any specific-
No, it doesn't protect us. We don't have enough, we're not, but he's saying we've never held enough money for any of these projects.
No, and I mean, we haven't run into major problems that were caused by that factor alone, but it's actually an interesting point and I hadn't really-
DPW has ever taken over any work, that I can recall.
No, there have been a couple that we came close to, if you remember up on Foxwood, we-
Before my time?
We were, we were going to do that and that, that was a messy situation. There were one or two other ones. I think of one of the Coventry projects, something happened.
Not, not in my time has it happened.
I just, I just, the board, what you had said is, are we comfortable here? And I just wanted to make that clear to the board.
Is this, let's see, is this on the sewer?
Town water.
This is on sewer and town water, right?
It's just on?
Yeah, and, and that's factored in there?
We have, we have, even though they're in, as-built, approved and everything, we have, we are, we have a number for maintenance and cleaning, a small number, but it's all installed, it's as-built, it, it's approved and it's, it's already in the ground and, and good to go. And we do have an item under all three of those categories, small, but enough to go clean the catch basins or fix a gate valve or something like that.
Christine, something that I think you probably should do is go back to the Mass Mutual Association or wherever they best practices stuff, maybe the League of Planning Boards or whatever, you know, they, and see what the best practice is related to that, you know, the, this issue of how you should calculate the bond amounts. I suspect the way we do it is probably the way most places do it, but it'd be interesting to see if there's any literature on alternative approaches, so.
The applicant is here, correct? If you want. They could answer any other questions you have about this site. I did get a monitoring report today with photographs, the, the curbing is in and they're doing some clearing on Lot 7, so if you want to come up and address the board if they have any questions for you.
Well, it's everybody's pleasure. I'm actually okay with doing this, I don't think it's going to be a major problem in this case, but, you know, there are some options, is to release all the lots for this much money or to maybe hold back one lot and do a little bit more work to make sure that there's not anything else we missed.
I don't, I don't know if holding back a lot because it's, you did probably, you probably want to go from one lot to another to another and I think that's more of a cost to them to have to come back to us, especially if it's a month from a meeting or something like that. I don't know if the applicant would prefer to have a little bit more of a contingency or have all the lots released, maybe the applicant might want to step up.
Phil Christensen, speaking for the applicant, Jim Carroll. Yeah, if you wanted to put a contingency on top of that, if you were more comfortable with it, rather than hold another lot, holding a lot makes, does make it cumbersome because people come in and they'll say, you know, "I want, I want to build on 2A and you're holding it," and then it gets all mixed up. The other thing is, as you know, it is Jim Carroll's subdivision, he's done Molly Town Road, you know the work he's done in town over the years, so I don't suspect there's going to be any problem with him finishing.
Yeah, I, I think a 10% contingency on this project, the, most of it's law, most of the stormwater was pretty basic. The only thing, only thing I would like to see is just that we should, I don't know if he, I don't know if this applicant's come in and requested progress releases, if that's the case, we're technically holding, you know, that we should make sure that we're not going to release the DPW numbers completely and not have any money left for other items.
Yeah, we usually wait.
Yeah, but it's, but we've gotten to the point that we're down to a couple thousand dollars for landscaping or something like that, it's minimal and then we-
No, no, I mean, typically what happens is that, you know, you've seen it, is the, the money comes, you know, usually in a fairly large chunk of the total all at once, so.
Right.
So you want to add 8,000, round it up to make that 85,390?
85,000, just, yeah, 85,000.
So would you like to make a motion to accept the, the bond amount of 85,390 and have the plan to release the, the lots?
I'll make a motion to release the seven lots at 464 Appleton Street with a bond amount of $85,000.
And?
Eight lots.
I thought there was seven, is there eight now?
There's eight.
Okay.
Yeah, and pending the completion of all the paperwork.
Pending completion of all the paperwork.
Okay. All in favor?
All in.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving right along, this is exciting. Our next item is 602 Boxford Street, Wellington Way, definitive plan residential development, seven single-family houses along with open space. You're doing double duty here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, good. Where's the Wellington come from?
I have no idea.
Okay.
They picked Autumn Woods and that was no good, so the owner picked Wellington after that, I'm not sure.
And maybe, like, wasn't it like the 200th anniversary of Waterloo or something?
Waterloo, it could, it could be about Waterloo, you know, I don't know.
Something like that, yeah. Okay, good, well, give us the-
All right, yeah, again, Philip Christensen for the applicant, Messina Development. As you know, we've, we're here before for the preliminary plan, I believe we had two separate meetings for that, and I'll just go over it. I'm sure there's some butters here that hadn't been at that meeting. But we have a parcel that's approximately 18 acres in size and it sits between Brookview Drive and Duncan Drive, so the parcel is here. There were Form A lots cut out of it over here previously, there's work going on there, but the remainder of this parcel is about 18 acres. There's a water line on Brookview and is watered out on Duncan, but there's none on Boston, Boxford Street. So the idea, one of the things with the project is we're going to extend the water line from Brookview down to the project site. And when it's done, there'll be seven new lots there on a cul-de-sac. All of this land through here is open space, as well as a small open space area here, stormwater treatment area in this location. The houses are in this yellow septic system, as you can see in the backs of the lots here. As we mentioned originally, this is a cluster and it's got a 50-foot buffer and in two areas, as we mentioned during the preliminary review, we have to encroach on that 50-foot buffer for the septic systems, which, where we're not doing a PRD, we would, that's where the septic systems would be for a conventional subdivision, so either way, they would go in there. The open space, the required upland in the open space is 4.7 acres by your regulations, there's over seven acres of upland, even though it looks like, you know, the wetland is a big area here, but we exceed the open space requirements. So we'll extend the water line in from Brookview down to here, up through the site, and this is going to be a low-impact development, which you're seeing more and more of these days. So the roadway would be 24 feet wide, 3% on the crown, a four-foot shoulder, and then four-to-one slope down to a swell, this would be two feet deep, and then back up into the lots, with the trees being planted outside the right away. And that, that works pretty well, this four-to-one is, is a gradual slope, I think some people have tried to do it with steeper slopes, it doesn't work out very well. But this gives us a nice swell and it gives us enough depth to get a pipe in and driveway crossings to the lots over that. And the road itself- Is under 800 feet, but the dark green is the existing grade, just so you had some sense about the cuts and fills there, and then this purplish color is the proposed grade. So each of these blocks is two feet, so you see at the top, at the center line is about a four-foot cut in the roadway. This is the water line, it's approximately five feet down. You can see this fill here and at the front, there's a lot of excavation because there's a hill right in the front of the property we have to get in through. So that, when we do that then with the, when you look at the plan and compare that to the roadway cross-section, you'll see swales down the side of the road, so the water will drain off down through this way, drain to this side, down through here, and we do have one little sump in the middle of the cul-de-sac to take anything, any water that runs from the crown down to the, the middle of the cul-de-sac. Now, Gene Willis, early on in the preliminary review, requested that we put catch basins in the street even though we don't have curbing, and his concern was, what's going to happen in the winter with these swales and you didn't want all the water just running down the street? His concern was, you plow the, plow the road, snow's on the edge of the road, it freezes and you get a rainstorm, what happens? So we've added catch basins in through here that discharge into the swell, into the stormwater area, but generally, they won't function, you know, the water will bypass them because it's just going to run off the, the shoulders. But in severe conditions where the snow is piled on the edge of the road, the catch basins will be effective, so it's, it's a good idea, I think, because you're going to have a few occasions where that might happen.
Whatever gave that idea this past winter?
It could be.
How does that work? Do they have to open up and half to the catch basin?
No, the catch basin's in the pavement.
Okay, it's right in the pavement.
Yes, it's, 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 the, the back of the catch basin's on the edge of pavement, so they'll just plow the street and if they happen to plow it just right at the edge, then water will run down over the basin.
And if they don't, then the catch basin-
If they plow it out farther, then the water's going to run down into the swell, so, because that, the roadway crown continues through the shoulder. So if they plowed it a little bit wider than the street, then the water would just run into the swell.
Planes that they dig up their lawns and they can't win when it comes to plowing, so.
Right, so the LID has advantages in the fact that it, it does a couple of things for you, it helps reduce that peak flow rate because you don't collect all the water real quick and then dump it in one spot. With, with the LID, it's got to go into these swales, we have check dams in the swales all the way along, so the water has to slow down and then it goes to this big infiltration detention basin. And with the soils out here being primarily sands, they're A soils, very high permeability, so what we're able to do is collect all the water in here and not have any increase in flow off-site and in fact, the, the basin, the only time it'll overflow, any water gets out of it is all, at all, is during a 100-year storm. And even then, it's only overflowing by, by about an inch over the overflow we're. So, you know, the LID does have advantages, but it has some drawbacks, which being that wintertime may be a problem. And really, that's, all of the lots, just so you know, the smallest lot's about 25,000 square feet, the largest is about 55,000 square feet, all meets your requirements for LID, PRD size.
For the septic systems, how solid are your plans at this point? I mean, do you pretty much feel close to fully confident that, that those are the right locations or?
Yeah, that's where we did all the testing, that's where we found the soils. And it's all two-minute per inch perk rate except for, I think it was in here, it was about four minutes, rest of it was just sand, most of the time it couldn't keep water in the perk hole, so. We perked it in January, it was nine below zero, very pleasant day.
Have you brought the, the plans at all to the Board of Health?
We have not, I, I just rely on the standard process that, you know, the, the board gets, well, they get a copy of this when we submit it, obviously.
Yeah, I think, because as I well learned when I first joined this board, we did more subdivisions that actually had- more subdivisions that actually had septic systems relatively than sewers, that, you know, there's basically three criteria you look at, you know, whether it conforms to zoning, whether it conforms to regulations, and whether the septic systems work. So I feel that we, you've got to do a-
We haven't heard back from the Board of Health yet. I, I've got two comments from engineering and DPW. Each department head has received their packet, but after tonight's meeting with all your questions, I will then ask, make sure I get all those for the next meeting.
As you know, the subdivision control law says the Board of Health is supposed to recommend to you, if we're not, the site is suitable.
Yeah.
We're not required at this point to do septic designs because obviously that's added cost.
No, no, I understand. But it's, you know, it's, it's a threshold sort of thing.
Yeah, they, they have forty-five days by statute to give you a response if the site's good or bad.
Yeah.
And-
Yeah. We've had some that weren't so good over the years, believe it or not.
But this, this one is, I feel confident this is the location where they're going to work. Relatively small systems, you can imagine, with two-minute per inch perk, you know, on a sandy soil. Only problem is a couple of them, the water table's a little higher, so it might be mounted up a bit. But they're in the lower area, so we can grade over them and make them conform to the landscape around it. But it's, it's interesting, too. This, the road goes right up the ridge, pretty much, although the left is a little bit higher. But, you know, the drainage area is this way and this way. It just splits that drainage area. Just worked out very well.
How are you handling the stormwater right at the entrance?
Well, we have, we do have a catch basin down here that comes across just to pick up anything left in the swales through here. The last set of catch basins to pick up the drainage that comes off this road, so not too much is not treated. Right here, we have catch basin, the catch basin in the swell right here takes the water over to the detention pond. And the last little bit comes down and goes out that way.
Right at the entrance?
Right at the entrance, right.
No, but, no, right down at the entrance.
At the entrance, we have a detail, if you, on, on the detail sheet, there's a separate grading, little grading plan here. And it's a good point. The street falls about four feet in elevation from this point to this point. So there's, there's a slope down through here, and the water's going to go that way. You can't, can't fight it. And if we had a crown in the road here, then we'd start to puddle over here. So what we've done is to grade this cul, not grade the entranceway, so the water flows across it in this direction. Regarding conservation, too, just, just on the side, the, all of this work is outside the hundred-foot buffer zone. There's a wetland across the street, and there's, just this work in here is within conservation jurisdiction.
I know we're digging up the road to put in the water line and they're repaving it. Does it need to be a catch basin on, added to the left-hand corner of that roadway?
Down in here?
Nope. On the road.
Right here?
Yeah, yeah, right, right at the corner, because that looks like where it's going to sheet to.
I don't think so. This, this is just going to sheet down this way, but.
But right at the, down at the, right at the turn. It looks like it goes from one-twenty-two to one-twenty, so you have-
Oh, you're saying it's going out this way?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a little bit of a-
And I think that's where, I think that's the corner you're not going to pick up. I mean, it just something-
Right, this little bit right here, yes, that's, that's-
And that's where, I mean, if we're going to do the road over, I'd hate to do the road over, put the water line in, and then have to dig it up five years from now or three years from now because we have ice water and ice sheeting in that corner.
Okay, we'll take a look at that then.
Phil, do you have the picture of the conventional, just, did you bring that?
No, I do not.
I only have the news submitted with me tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, what got us-
I just like to see that. Just, I mean, I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, it was a longer cul-de-sac with a lot back over here that was kind of, had frontage here, then narrowed down, and then opened up in the back for house back there.
Yeah, where's the wetlands again on this?
Wetlands is all right through here.
Would you like an aerial, John?
Uh, no, that's okay. Why don't you show us just for a quick second? What the heck?
Yeah, it doesn't help too much.
It's not, it's going to show you the trees, but on the, in the left quadrant, you can see, that's the, the wetland area.
Yeah, you can kind of make out the wetlands there.
Yeah. The other, actually, that sort of question answers my other question. Question is the, the, how wooded it is and the extent of the clearing that you would have.
It's fully wooded. We do have on the plan, I set, can't see it on here, but on the plan, on the sedimentation control plan, I set the hay bales around it at the limit of work, so you can get some sense of what it is. You have maybe, just to guess, from this, maybe four and a half acres of clearing from here. That's a guess.
So we, you'll have, you'll show us one of the plans that list at the limitation of the work.
Yeah, that's, that's submitted as sedimentation control plan. That same line is also a limit of work.
Yeah, because I mean, obviously, part of the reason why we're, we're doing it this way is to preserve as much of the natural topography as possible, so.
Is that the yellow line on the sedimentation plan?
Yes.
Want to see it, John?
Yeah, sure.
It's a little hard to make out the yellow line, but that's the hay bale and limit of work.
So it's all inside the lots, too, right? So basically, everything at the front will be cleared because you have to put the-
The narrow entrance, yes.
But once you get into the, the property, it goes basically straight into the lots. So everything outside of the lots will stay as is. Okay, good. Thanks, Pete. Yeah, because it does look actually on your thing, there are a couple of areas where there's some steep slopes in the back. And I think, yeah, let's actually talk a little bit about that. One, lot three and lot four. It looks like there's going to be some fairly steep slopes. I was just wondering if, you know, how you're kind of managing your way through that. And, you know, because one of the things that we've, we have found is, you know, steep slopes are a problem for two reasons. Even if you cut into them at all, you run into problems. But then if the houses are too close to the slopes, that creates some problems, so.
Yep.
I mean, how did you, did, did you do much of your design with that in mind, or, you know?
Well, if you look at that same sheet, that sedimentation control sheet, you can see the proposed contours around the houses. So, for instance, on lot number three, the top of foundation's at one forty-seven, but the basement floor is at thirty-nine-five. So that gives you a walkout in the back.
The back.
Yeah, so there's a one forty contour approximately. So the area behind the house up to the one forty contour gets cleared out. But you, you kind of work the house into-
So that one, I mean, fits well, but it, it's funny. It looks like you've, with the septic there, you've gone up past the-
You have to go down, right, that's where the testing is and-
Yeah, that you've, it looks like there's a slope and then it levels off again.
Yes.
On lot three.
Yep.
And, yeah, so you pretty much have to do that. And on lots four-
Lot four is the same as a walkout in the back. You know, you, the house will be raised up to the street level or thereabouts, the front of the house, and then the back is a walkout basement. And the elevation of basement four is one thirty-three-five. It is a one thirty-two contour proposed walking, works around the back of the house. And then obviously, you have to clear down to the septic system. But really restricted clearing.
Yeah, you didn't really have much in the way of alternatives, it looks like. I mean, you know, you-
Had to develop those lots?
Yeah, I mean-
No, you, pretty restricted. Once you, you cut down those lots to the size required for the PRD, you don't have a lot of flexibility, no. And you, you really don't want to put the houses at the bottom of the hill, you know, so.
Looks like most of them will have walkout basements.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's actually not so bad. That's better than the opposite.
Yes.
We've seen a few of those, yeah. Now that I see it that way, if you're walking out, I think it's much cleaner than, than the alternative where you have something that's higher up right next to you, so, okay.
Yeah. Fortunately, in our business, we get a lot of people come in and they buy a lot, and they have the house that they always wanted, but the, the two just don't fit, you know. And so at least when you do this, you can plan what goes on along. Number, number three is Joyce Bradshaw's lot.
The, what do we have back from our consultant? Do we have?
I have not heard back from Lisa yet on this one, because she wanted to resolve the mills first. We had a priority of timing.
Fair enough.
But she's also taking a vacation in August, which I spoke to Phil about. So I want to be sure. If you have engineering, storm drain, or environmental questions, raise as many of them tonight as you can so that we can work with Lisa before she goes on vacation prior to your next meeting. I did hear back from Tim, Tim Willett and Gene had commented, department comments. And I think you, you've already received those back, right?
I got Gene's comments. I sent the response back to him today.
So I do not have Board of Health and Conservation meeting on this-
Tomorrow.
Can you forward those comments to us?
Yes, they should have been in the packet, but if they're not, they will be.
Well, they wouldn't have been in the packet because that says yesterday.
They just came yesterday, okay.
In the packet, it was sent out Friday.
So here's, these are Tim's comments.
Refresh my memory of, you know, the, I know there's open space here, but there's also open space on the budding parcels, whether there's any paths through the woods on any of those properties.
Well, this, this is all open space from Brookview. And this is the open space from this project is proposed. And then, I'm not sure, some neighbors here, they might know more. Duncan Drive comes down, this is all wetland down here.
Yeah, okay.
This is upland through here. From my walking around, there's no real paths that go through there. Some, a couple of trails that some hunters use, but we will have access through here, through the open space, and back through here. But we have not proposed any kind of trails.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to see. Can you go down a little bit? Or is that the whole? No, the other way?
It's kind of all-
Yeah, that's all we have. That's all you have, okay.
I know the Conservation Commission, this habitat is the nesting habitat for the turtles. They think they're in the area. They crossed the road, Boxford Street. So they're very interested in having this open space that they've set aside.
Yeah, we did meet with Natural Heritage out there in the spring because it is habitat for the-
Landing turtle.
Landing turtle. They actually, the overwintering habitat is to the south of Boxford Street. And they said, this is really a foraging habitat. When they heard that the town has seventy-five-foot offset, no development from vernal pools, and there's vernal pools within the wetland, when they knew that nothing would be disturbed within seventy-five feet of that wetland line, they were satisfied that this is not a take, you know, it's their phraseology. But they were happy with this project, and we've been keeping them informed as we go along, giving, sending them plans, so they're up to date on it.
Pete, do you have any questions? Now, Dave? Lynn?
You haven't, have you added the catch basin to the plans that Gene mentioned or not yet?
No, they're on the plan now.
Okay. Now wait to see Lisa's comments.
So why don't we entertain, since there are butters here, if anybody wants to speak or ask a question, if they can come up to the mic, introduce themselves, and we'll see what we can do if, if you do have a question. Okay. Don't be bashful. We don't fight.
My name's Christina Higok. I live at six fifteen Boxford Street. So I'm across the street from six oh two. And I don't necessarily know that I need to bring this up at a meeting, but I just wanted to, I wanted to see the plan just out of curiosity. But I also just wanted to let it be known that we're interested in tapping into the water line when it goes down. I spoke to Christine, Kristen, a couple of weeks ago, actually about a month ago or so. I have talked to Gene. I've tried to, I've reached out to Tim. I've tried to line, set up my ducks in a row. I called her off as I spoke to your wife. I talked to Bob. So, so I just want everybody to know that we are very interested in tapping into the water line. And again, I, I don't know, you know, that I actually need to stand here and tell you this, but I just wanted to let it be known that we are very interested. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions? Okay. When do we, we're not meeting the next meeting.
No, we're, August fourth, you guys took-
It's National Night Out for the town. That's, that's free food that we've missed for the last five years.
Somebody said it was like a policeman's gathering or something, or is it just a town-
Well, it's a town gathering.
Town employee. So you're meeting on August eighteenth. And again, Lisa Eggleston, your reviewer, is leaving for vacation on the thirteenth. So if you have any other thoughts or questions or concerns that you really want her to raise, either think of them tonight or email me soon.
Well, why don't you get her to review it, send us the review, and we can bring back comments before she goes on vacation.
Yeah.
But as soon as you get it back, send an email to all of us.
I think she was walking the site today or tomorrow, so, and anticipating getting things done.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along, our next item is another public hearing for Four High Street, the West Mill modification to the downtown overlay district special permit. And I remember, I haven't forgotten about this completely because it was only two weeks ago that we talked about this, so. So can you, Christine, update us on anything that has happened since then?
I'm just going to set up a PowerPoint. We did ask, because the stormwater management report was pretty hefty to read and review, we had Lisa do the, the heavy lifting on that, and she's done her review. She had some comments. She turned it around as quick as possible so they could get a decision going. And I don't, I think, like I said, I took a stab at making a draft decision. That's in your packet today. There are other decis, decision from beforehand is also in your packet. And they're, again, looking to demolish the entire building thirty-seven, redesign the parking lot, the landscaping and stormwater. So it's three components. The other pieces of their development from the previous development remain in place.
Okay, well, while we plug in here, I'm David Steinberg from RCG LLC, representing the applicant. As you know, we were here two weeks ago giving the broad strokes of what we were hoping to accomplish. We appreciate staff and the peer review consultant acting really quickly on this. We're sort of losing our season and we're, we're hoping to get things underway this summer. What we want to do in this presentation is go into more detail on the modifications, specifically to the plan. As we mentioned before, this was mostly driven by the engineering challenges over where the culverts carry the Kachikowick Brook through the site. So if you look at the previously submitted scheme, and, and I know that special permit addressed some other things like building residential apartments, and we're strictly talking about site plan and some additional demolition for our modifications here. This was a previously submitted scheme. You, you can see there's a lot of paving down for the middle of the site, and that about half of building thirty-seven, which is the building closest to the pond on the right-hand side, there you go, being indicated by the cursor there, was still in place. So if you can go to the next slide, Seth. Now, we've essentially created a new green space down the middle of the site. Overall, we have about the same number of parking spaces. number of parking spaces. It went up by a few, as we learned in doing the front loop parking area, you might lose a few when we see the actual conditions under the site, but we were still able to create significantly more green space in this plan, and still preserve the concept of adding parking to the middle of the site to make the buildings more marketable, and having open space and preserve the sightlines, or create sightlines now to the, to Osgood Pond through the site. If you go to the next slide, Seth, so here's the bullet points. When we originally submitted the first plan, our first priority was to protect the culvert, and we did that by leaving the existing slab in place. When we did further engineering study of the slab that was existing, we found, actually, we couldn't be working over that existing slab, and have decided to just take it out entirely and start over. Now, what we had is very sort of finely tuned stormwater management on the site, has been simplified a lot and created larger swales and areas for stormwater management. We still have circulation through the site that can, you know, accommodate regular traffic as well as fire trucks and emergency vehicles. We've reduced the total impervious area, which is nice also from, from the impression, I think, of how the site will look when we're done. As I said, we gained a few parking spaces, and instead of approaching the challenge that we're going to have to come back to this board with anyway, of what to do with the remainder of Building 37 for a new facade, and the other structural and building challenges to that, we've decided to just eliminate the rest of that building and open up the site more completely, and hopefully that'll be part of, when we do a more complete master plan, not sure whether that would be a building, will be a parking area, will be some other service to a commercial tenant. If you can go onward. So, we want to just walk through, zoom in a little bit on some of the areas of these changes. So, if we go to number one there, as you can see, where the culvert's traveling right down the middle of the site, before we were spanning that, or using the existing slab and parking over that slab, given the soil conditions and the condition of that slab, as it is now, it wasn't going to support that type of weight. At least there's a risk it wouldn't support that type of weight over the long term. So, if we go to the next slide, what we did now is created a drainage swale essentially that, that goes about 10 feet at least wide away from the culverts. This is, this highlights both the sort of white area with the two parallel rectangles, or those are the pipes going through the site. On each side of those, the hatched areas are specifically the stormwater management aspects of the swale. The rest will just be essentially grass and green space there. We've also highlighted here, it turned out that the culvert is properly spanned structurally on the parking loop that exists now, and the same is true on the back of the site, which is one of the reasons we assumed it was fully spanned throughout the site, but it's not once you enter the existing building. So, that will remain. Yep.
You've been talking about Kachikowick Brook and culvert, so the Brook goes through the culvert in this location.
Yes.
In the portion that is now the center drainage swale, what does the culvert look like? What is the culvert?
There are two 60-inch pipes that are, I don't know how deep beneath below grade.
There are two 60-inch concrete pipes, we believe installed somewhere approximately 1950 plus or minus, based on air photo records. We don't know that much about what they were installed, we don't have permits or plans for them. And they're about two to three feet below the current slab depth. In our finished grades, there'll be approximately two feet of dirt on top of them. But the advantage is the whole system is now pervious, to the extent that urban fill is pervious, so there is some ability for the water to drain through the whole system, and generally be sort of held, and will slowly infiltrates in the event of a large storm, storm event. We're happy to take questions as we go.
Are they solid pipes, and they wouldn't, wouldn't be, wouldn't drain it back into the system?
Those are. Those are solid pipes, yeah. When we say the water will infiltrate, we mean into the groundwater.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hopefully no holes into the pipes.
Probably are.
Probably are, but.
1950?
Yeah.
Well, even if they're, even if they're concrete, they are pervious, somewhat pervious, you know, you'll get some water in it, but.
Yeah, we think in the, due to the width of the band, that water will be able to sort of drain widely around the pipes, and depending where the groundwater is at any given time.
Boy, two, only two feet below grade, though?
Two or three feet, it's pretty close.
That's a big, that's a big cross hazard.
Because we're going downhill as we go across the street. Frost hazard, you're saying?
Yeah. Is it, is it fast-moving, or is it ever, it must be slow-moving in the wintertime?
I don't know. I mean, I don't think the water fills the pipe in any event. I mean, it would have to be.
So, it's pretty.
It's actually, the pipes get much bigger as you cross the street. So, it's coming through the pipes on the east mill side that are narrower, actually through one pipe that's narrower and goes into these pipes. I think it's moving in all seasons.
Yeah, definitely is flowing all seasons.
So, when you shifted from parking in the center to the green space swale in the center, did you consider opening the Brook?
We actually thought about that a little bit, but decided, you know, the original intention of keeping the Brook in the pipes and untouched was probably the safest thing to do. We even thought of opening up in other areas, like around the outlet, so you could see the outfall, but again, disturbing the pipes in that area, and now it's protected as it outlets. So, we kept that structure in place.
It's a major engineering project at that point. It becomes a riverfront.
Same, totally.
I mean, it could be very cool, but we need to get this, we need to get this thing done. We think that ultimately, that this area in the middle will be much more attractive than the original scheme. So, this was the original middle of the, sort of how our parking was laid out before.
I didn't mean to derail the presentation, it's very helpful.
No, no, I think it actually makes sense to ask questions as we go through the four points anyway, because it's.
Thank you.
You know, they tend to differentiate, so please do. The second point was talking mostly just a cut through the middle of the site. Previously, since it was mostly paved for the middle of the site, we had more crossing points, and we had basically a large parking lot in the middle, and roads on each side that would have serviced the different sides of the parking lot. And now, as we flip to the next slide, you can see, basically, it's double-loaded parking on each side close to the buildings. The swale down the middle, and we've had to move around how you get through the site a little bit. There are significant grade changes in some areas, and so the green arrows are moving right to left toward the top of the plant and bottom of the plant, and really the pedestrian accessways through the lots, and the blue arrows being vehicular access through the site.
To give you a sense of the scale change, this floor height here, my cursor is, is approximately six feet above this floor height here, five and a half to six feet above. So, we're transitioning partially just in grade within the lots, and then some small retaining walls and curb heights and things like that. This is a small block retaining wall, this dark line here. So, we make that transition incrementally across the site. And probably the low point is actually probably mostly in this swale here, kind of in this zone here, but this, this larger bio-swale is one of the low points of the site.
Our engineers actually requested that we not do too much crossing actually over, even with the soil there and the pipes there. We try to keep those areas clear of activity as much as possible, so we've moved it.
How much below the parking area will the swale go?
I think it's less than a foot.
You know, I wouldn't, yeah, it might be. I could look at the.
Because to the right side, so, to the left side, that parking is several feet above the swale, and then, and actually, it's retained by a block wall. And the lower parking area to the right of the plan is pretty close to grade all the way through.
I assume somebody who parks on one side and wants to go to the other side will probably cut across that swale.
No, I'm not sure, because, because when you get, if you're crossing from the right side to the left side, you're going to have to basically scramble up, either climb up a wall or scramble through that area.
This is a wall that is between two and three feet tall.
Okay, okay.
And you'd be bushwhacking. I'm not saying someone's not going to do it. I expect that it will happen, but what we've tried to do is, is build a, you know, normal crosswalks and sidewalks here that will feel like you're crossing a crosswalk with sidewalks and streets and so forth, and that connects through the existing loop parking to our sort of plaza park front door space here, so that has sort of a connection there. And then, the next best spot to make a crossing, we thought was essentially, so here, and I think we'll come into this in another couple of slides, but, but this area here is a bridge, and so we're, well, we'll come back to this, but we essentially have a ramp system here. This is all part of a wood decking system here, and so there's a ramp up here, and we're able to work on some existing foundation that helps manage load and things like that.
Well, with the two and three-foot barrier there, that's probably adequate.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, kids.
Oh, kids, kids will go wherever, but.
They'll skateboard on top of those, boy.
I mean, we're not worried about necessarily pedestrians in that area, but we don't want, you know, from the culvert's perspective, you know, the culvert's sacred, we don't want them parking a truck, or a fire truck, or tractor trailer anywhere near that. So, that's sort of the, puts a guiding light in this design.
I should also say, if you look at what we did in the swales on the east mill side, we've really let that grass grow up.
Yep.
And try to get wild, and that basically is what keeps people out of those. You know, if they see a mowed lawn, they'll cut over it, but if they see tall grasses and other plants growing, they tend to steer clear.
I think there's a native.
We'll sign up plenty of ticks for these grasses.
Ticks. I think there's a, there's a, I think there's a native seed, grass seed mix that's back, I can't remember exactly what it is, but it's on the, it's on the planning sheet in the set. There's some description of what the planting mixes is.
So, we'll actually come back to some of the crossing in that decking area, but wanted to jump over here to, previously, we were keeping, like I said, about half of Building 37. That was a proposed facade at the time. This board asked us to come back, try out some other designs that might be more attractive, and as we studied more and more rebuilding this building, it was enough of a challenge. We said, you know, well, we're probably going to improve upon it more seriously at a later date, so why don't we just take it all down and open up the site, and that would give us flexibility in the next design. And while guys are demolishing things out there, that's the best time to take care of it. So, now we're just showing a seed mix for that area, that we'd leave soil behind, put in a seed mix, and then maintain that area till we have our master plan figured out for the rest of the site. There is, you can see to the right of the plan there, there is an existing area where infrastructure for the Converse building remains. So, there's a, there's a cooling tower in there, a backup generator, some electrical service coming through there, so we intend to keep that infrastructure preserved on that side. There's also the detention pond just below that. So, the intent is to pull everything off the Converse buildings, take the rest of the building down, leave soil, and leave the road as it stands now, coming up at the top of the screen there, adjacent to the pond.
While you're on this page, what does the side of this Converse building look like that faces?
Sure.
Sutton Pond condos, because?
Yep.
I beat you.
It does, it actually looks similar to what you see off.
It has windows, it's on some.
It has windows. Yeah, it has the arched window.
Okay, so it's nice, it's a nice facade.
It's brick, it's bricked over and has glass. So, I think that'll be nice to open that up, for the benefit of the.
Because I know you're going to leave that as grass, I wouldn't want to see that be an eyesore for five, 10 years.
Well, yeah, we expect to occupy it with tenants, and I think they'll, they'll really like having windows on that, that face, which would be nice.
But I just want to make sure that, because we're not, usually would make you put some sort of landscaping plan together for that area, so, but where it's going to be a temporary situation, we just want to make sure that side of the building is cleaned up, if there's any, you know, graffiti, because it's a little alleyway or something, clean, you know, I know you guys will, but clean it up for the neighbors, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it will, right, it'll be very exposed, and this, which is nice, too, because now, behind the site is actually pretty hidden for passing by, and this will really open up all the way from the main parking lots through to the new parking lots and with lots of space.
And if that side of the building needs to be pointed, you want to make sure you take care of it before you put a new building up.
Yeah, I'm suspecting we'll have to do, well, it's structurally not entirely tied into the Converse building, but there are connections, so we're going to have to go do some, some improvements along the facade there, and we'll wait and see what it looks like when we take it down.
Joe? I have one question. I had one of your neighbors stopped in this afternoon. They've come by a couple of times to look at the plans, and he dropped off two pictures asking about some infrastructure, and I'm going to pass them to Seth to see if you can comment if those are in the corner, possibly by that existing cooling tower?
Oh, yeah, so, those are two oil-water separators.
Okay.
Two pictures of oil-water separators.
I can pass them around. Can you show them where that would be on the plan?
Sure. So, there are, the two oil-water separators, let me step back a little bit. I don't know if I really, hold on one second. I'm going to step back to the actual plan. It'd be easier to find that. So, we'll use this, we'll try this guy, see if I can find him up here.
Well, he's looking. These are, there's some folks that live on Sutton, on the pond that have come in asking a couple of questions, and we've been, you know, I think you saw one letter.
So, one way to think about this site is that this bridge, nothing really crosses plumbing, why, nothing underground, nothing really crosses the culvert, right, because the culvert's just below ground, and so, and so that nothing really crosses there. So, when they built this parking lot, or soon after, I don't remember the exact chronology, we do have some of the documents from when these were installed. They installed oil-water separators to catch essentially any grease, or oil, or fuel that fell out of trucks or anything through there, before it ended up in the pond. One of those is located essentially in this area right here, that might be it, right here. And that one's located right here. This would be removed entirely. It would be pulled out, and essentially, the, that sort of oil-water pollution separation cleaning process would be handled by the future swales. That's what they're designed to do, to handle that in a biological fashion instead of a hard infrastructure fashion. So, that one would be pulled out. This one essentially treats oil and gas, et cetera, that falls in this area of the back of the site as it exists today. The other one, which sort of peaks above the ground, if you're looking at the one that sort of stands proud of the asphalt, is the one here. You can see a little bit more clearly on this plan. That's along the side of the, of the drive, and that one is tied into the other part of this drive, and I believe also, the, it may be, I think it is also tied into the pond, the detention basin. I'm not 100% sure about how that works, but it definitely does the access drive, and it may also support the pond. We would expect that at some point that would come out, but essentially, we're not there yet, and that's the system right here. Does that make sense?
That's going to be barely visible from the neighboring property.
This guy?
Yeah. I mean, the HVAC tower, I think when I was over at Sutton Pond taking photos back at the back of your building, that was the big eyesore, which I know eventually that heating system, that's out in the middle of nowhere, you're going to probably.
So, there's, there's two HVAC systems that support this site. One is just outside, all on its own over here, and that one, let me actually, I can find an overall site plan here in the plan set.
So, one is exposed, probably the one people recognize the most, is that one that's completely exposed and up against the edge of the pond.
Yeah, the one that's on the.
That serves, right, the buildings that we're working on now.
Serves the buildings.
The other one serves Converse, and is in the enclosure that we're trying to keep in place when we do the rest of the work. We actually hadn't, you know, when we first came, before, we, we sort of wanted to stay away from infrastructure, because we know the challenge is to keep everything going as we do this, but we've, we've been speaking internally, and I believe Seth spoke to one of the neighbors today, about what are some alternatives for this chilling tower, because we've been looking into all the infrastructure and upgrading them, and, you know, basically, anything now that we could do with a cooling tower would be quieter and smaller, and maybe able to be set on the ground and better screened than what's there. We just haven't engineered out what to do, and it may be something that we should, we're going to look at it more aggressively while we're tearing up the site, to see if we can do that. So, it might be something, I'd know if we could just sort of get administrative approval to move a tower as part of the plan, if we have that opportunity over the next few months while we're doing this. That may be one way to treat it.
I don't think that's a big deal. I think you could handle it administratively. I think that's probably the best way to do it, because you kind of like, you get into it, and you're looking at it, and you say, "Well, it's time, let's do it."
Yeah, yeah. Taking up the site, you know where we can, where we can put it.
Do you think any new location would actually be further out? It's sort of, just sort of touches the 25-foot?
Yeah, right now.
Buffer?
It's here, this line is a 25.
So, any new locations, we try to get, you know, at least 50 feet. We were looking at the edge of that parking lot.
You know, perhaps here, perhaps farther back. We're not sure yet. We have to understand the engineering questions, because obviously it's supported now, and we have to find a good spot for it. We want to look at, and we may be able to downsize it, we may be able to get a more energy-efficient one. able to get a more energy-efficient one, you know, it's 30 years old.
Building.
This one?
Yeah, because that's usually, I mean, but that's, that tower serves that whole half of the property, right?
This is a single-story building here.
So you're eventually going to want to build up on that, huh?
Well.
No, I don't think we'd touch that building, I think the preference would be, because we thought about also putting the tower on top of that building.
That's usually what you do, you just put a cooling tower.
But it carries a lot of, we probably have to build a whole new structure just to carry that on top of it.
Yeah, the spans in this building are pretty open.
That's again, timber frame, single story, so it's not really built to carry too much more, but I think that is one consideration.
Because you could just run your pipe to the side of the building.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time, we spent a lot of time looking at this, certain operational preferences about doing that, but when we had the structural engineer look at it, we got a little, it's a little more, more challenging than we thought. It also, because this is a single-story building, we don't really get the same kind of, you know, when it's up on top of a five-story building, it's up above everyone, but on a single-story building, a lot of people are still going to be able to see it, so.
It's a single story, but it's probably two stories height-wise, isn't it?
It's about 13. I would say 13 to 15 feet clear inside, yeah. It's a good height.
15, 16.
Maybe 15, 16, yeah.
I want to put.
It's a good height building, but it also is going up the hill, so here, it's only, you know, eight feet from this courtyard to the roof, and on this side, it's 15 feet, because we're going up the hill that way. You want to talk about the bridge?
Okay, yeah, if we go to back this slide.
Fourth zone here.
The fourth area, so, all right, where he's got highlighted, area number four there. So, there's actually an interesting component of the way the structure worked, once we started investigating further and further. So the reinforced bridge that has the yellow arrow pointing it, pointing it out now, is what's designed to carry trucks and heavy loads. Then actually, as we stepped down to the lighter gray area, which is at a different grade, was actually another structural system from the rest of the slab, this was more strongly built because it was covering where the culvert outlets. So that particular area was, was another area we wanted to keep intact and not disturb, and can carry, you know, the structural engineer is more comfortable with carrying vehicular, or carrying foot traffic, not vehicular traffic, across that, and if you see, can you go to the next slide, Seth? What we're going to use that area for is, the slab would be preserved as concrete and go over it with, with some kind of decking, a wood deck or, or a similar, and it would allow us to transition, you know, to create a pedestrian path through the site from the lower area to the upper area, as well as just potentially a gathering area in a nice open space, that would, you know, aesthetically screen the concrete slab there, and allow us to create some drainage across that beneath the decking. And that's at, that also has, drops off slightly from the bridged area over the back, so it would help us clean up that edge. And so you can see in the, sort of, I don't know, peach-colored area there, that's on both sides of the drive, we'd like to do some treatment to that effect.
Any renderings of what this new arrangement, the central swale, the wooden deck, and removal of 37, what it looks like?
We don't have anything like that, we tried to get, figure out a way to get long views out to the pond, given the buildings that are in place, but we couldn't really get any. So all we could do was sort of, you know, color in blue from, from, you know, standing back at High Street.
No, not so much the view, just I think with your original plan, I think we had some.
Yeah, I think we have a cross-section in the full set, can we pull up the cross-section?
Yeah, let me show you a couple, let me show you a couple things, so there's a cross-section in this plan, let me zoom out a little bit, in this plan set, like, we do have a rendering from our Revit model, but of the buildings, which I could show you, which I maybe have on this computer right now.
That's center swell.
Sure. Actually, it'd be faster if I find it here.
Christine, you mentioned there was a letter from the neighbors, we don't have that in our package, so we're going to, you're going to want to read it into the record?
It was a neighbor letter.
Here's a cross-section of the swell, just before, so the deck would be here, this is sort of through the main body of the swell, so as I was saying, sort of the low point is to the right or the north of the swell in this area, the parking lot on the north side is here, you can see it crowns kind of far onto the right, so that it drains this way through the swell into this overflow zone, it's, it's designed in, you know, we have a fair amount of capacity here without flooding this parking lot, I mean, you know, in a thousand-year flood, you know, we may flood the parking lot, it happens, but in general, this will give us a lot of additional storage capacity in the event of a large rainstorm, but I believe it's engineered to meet all the relevant standards for hundred-year floods and stuff, and Lisa's looked at it, given her blessing to how that works.
Essentially, from a visual impression, everything between, from the outside edge of the tree canopy there is going to be green down the middle of the site, and then everything will be paved from there back to the buildings, except where we have some isolated planting beds there.
I don't think I have that folder on me. No, I don't think so. As Dave was saying, it's tricky, because right now, there's a giant two-acre building, right, in the place where we'd like to be able to take that perspective, so I can't, we can't take like a photograph and then Photoshop in what the buildings would look like, because there's just nothing to work with. So it's something we've definitely thought about, it's just challenging, given the existing context, to give that kind of artist's impression of what the center would look like. And the grades kind of, it goes down and back up and over, it's a little tricky.
Do you have that letter?
Yes, I do have the letter, would you like to read it online or in print?
How long is it?
It's a noise pollution at Osgood Pond, and then this is their response that came in yesterday and today, and I'll put that up here. He's good. She's actually, I think, in the meeting packet as well.
Let's read this.
Read it.
Okay, I'll read it, and you can read the response, how's that? This is, the subject is West Mill Development Concerns, and it is from Roger and Sungree Pennington, who live at Sutton Pond Condominiums. We watch with great interest your effort to redevelop the West Mill property in a manner that will serve the best interests of our neighborhood. As you proceed with your latest plan, we respectfully request you to incorporate a solution for the following issues of concern to us. One, noise pollution, unshielded noise emanating from the Schneider Electric HVAC unit situated on the edge of the Osgood Pond poses a threat to health and quality of life of Sutton Pond residents, as well as others nearby. In its present location, the unit is also a cumbersome eyesore that would detract from the West Mill's new appearance. Relocation of this unit will be important to a successful outcome. Number two, Osgood Pond deterioration, the pond's rapid decline is shown by the continuing landmass buildup below the West Mill Woodway and along the granite building marsh. We do respect the stringent environmental regulations governing the pond, however, while protecting the wetlands, we also need to preserve the pond as a reminder of our mill heritage from the early 19th century. Action is required to prevent the pond from turning into a swamp. We commend you for the recent improvement to the High Street entrance and the restoration projects underway. In light of your accomplishments with the East Mill, we are confident you will make your decisions for the West Mill, that will enhance the beauty and tranquility of our neighborhood, so. Okay, and I have a reason. This is addressed to Roger and Sungree Pennington, Sutton Pond Condominiums, from RCG Women LLC. Re-West Mill redevelopment concerns. Thank you for your letter expressing interest in the redevelopment of the West Mill property. We are looking forward to the renovation of the complex as a mixed-use live-work-play center for North Andover, and are diligently working in collaboration with the town on our master plan for future development. Regarding your concerns about the HVAC unit adjacent to Osgood Pond, we have been looking into relocating and/or upgrading both large cooling towers that support the cooling systems in the existing buildings. However, the cooling towers were installed around 1985 and 1993 respectively, and have significant associated infrastructure, so there are certain engineering challenges the development team sorting, that challenges the development team sorting through while, while we work on other components of redesigning the site. While I can't guarantee it will, it will be practical to move or additionally screen the units, I would be interested in meeting with you to understand your concerns better and incorporate your input into the discussion for improvements. Our development team certainly shares your concern about the health of the former mill ponds. This spring, the owners of East Mill have undertaken an extensive multi-year process to improve water quality in the mill pond by installing aerators and the application of approved herbicides to reduce the invasive water chestnut. Osgood Pond is a different case, because the owners of West Mill do not own the pond itself, and are in a position, similar position to you as, and a butter to the pond. We wouldn't want to venture what the best long-term approach is to maintain Osgood Pond properly, but would support any efforts to develop a specific pond plan for Osgood Pond, or even better, the development of a comprehensive plan for managing the watershed from Lake Kuchikawick to the Maribor River, that deals with water quality, flood risks, and sediment accumulation. I wanted to get your response in writing that included the other parties copied on the correspondence, but I will also reach out via phone to see if we can set up a meeting to go over these issues in more detail as a general update on our development plan.
I spoke with Roger and Sungree today about these issues, and it's a similar conversation to what you sort of see reflected here, I think their understanding of the constraints that we're operating on, and are encouraged by our willingness to make improvements. There's sort of two issues, one, we've already sort of addressed to a certain extent tonight, which is the mutually shared preference to improve the cooling tower situation, and just aren't yet to a point where we know how to do that, but we expect that we will be able to do that, you know, potentially for the next few months, at least come with an improved circumstance. It is a challenging situation, in some sense, for us as the new owner, given that these cooling towers have been in position, essentially, operating in the same manner for the last 30 years, which is, you know, longer than there have been condos there. Not to say we don't think that there's opportunity for improvement. And then regarding the Osgood Pond deterioration, as you would know, from this arsenal, we've looked at an approach to improve the quality of the plantings on the bank, including some invasive species removal, some new native species planting, you know, improving the depth of the 25-foot buffer, and ultimately improving water quality through improved stormwater management best practices. We are currently in the process, somewhat painful process, of trying to restore the East Mill pond, which has had some difficulty the last few years. It's, you know, as Dave and I were talking about today, it's challenging, because obviously, you know, 20 years ago, the ponds were different than they are today, and understanding the complex forces that have caused that to happen is really a systemic watershed issue, as we try to point out, it's a combination of what's happening on the roads upstream of us, it's a combination of parcels and new development, and new paving, and fertilizer use, and all these other sort of non-point source things that are difficult to get a handle on, and we've been trying to at least manage our sort of out-of-control water chestnut problem using aquatic control technologies, the same company that the town uses to help maintain the reservoir and the Stevens Pond, but we think ultimately, you know, in our early days, we had a small flooding incident, you kind of have to look at the whole watershed comprehensively, because there's a number of choke points, and beaver dams, and mixed ownerships, and unless we're all sort of pulling together, there's a limit to what anyone can do. I'm not sure whether the condos or the town owns that pond, Osgood Pond.
Excuse me, may I say something about that?
Sure.
Yes, if you could come up to my forefront and identify yourself, that would be great. I'll just make a quick comment. I'm Robert Carroll, I live at 148 Main Street in North Andover at Sutton Pond. Just in the early 1900s, the town of North Andover took by eminent domain the water of the pond, and from what I understand, the property lines have not changed, however. So that is all I wanted to make on that. Later on, I do have a comment on a safety issue which I want to speak to.
Okay, sure, sure.
Knowing that the pond's not yours to maintain or anything like that, I know with Lake Kuchikawick, we, you can't, you know, take water away from, or add more water, and now it's be treated water, not asking you to do it now, but you, when you start redeveloping, you know, the parcel with Building 37 is, is maybe you can work with conservation and Lisa, and maybe we can increase some treated water to the lake relatively easily, or something like that, and look at, not the lake, the pond, but there may be some advantages there to try to, you know, use that land and try to get some treated water into the pond, and, because it is going down because of not just your property, everybody's property.
It's a really dry, dry summer, I think our pond's probably the lowest temperature.
Yeah, but we might be able to get some treated water to the pond in the big scheme of things, and it'll improve your property value if it's not a swamp.
No, we certainly share that, share that desire, yeah.
But just put that on your, put that on your schedule for.
Christine, the Lisa's comments, how, how do they stand?
Lisa's comments were also in the transmittal, they were reasonable, and I believe you guys have, the mills have responded back. She didn't have, I want to say, I mean, it was a, it was a two-page, two-page letter, and she asked for clarification on one drawing sheet, which they did revise and send back to her, and I'm going to say John Ford, I just want to read his, she asked in an email to clarify a couple of construction drawings, and he attached a revised sheet C12, which had additional cross-sections to describe the bio-retention and storage design in the center green space. The design has not changed, if it answers your questions, we can submit a stamped drawing to replace the sheet, so I think she found an error on one of the sheets.
Are there any issues that are other than, what I'm going to say, administrative issues that are still open at this point?
I don't believe so.
No.
I, it was pretty.
She basically said, to summarize it, that because they're taking, they're adding in all the green grass, you know, they're reducing their outflow, everything like that, but she did clarify that that all goes away when you, of course, put something up there, and the stormwater plant's going to drastically have to change.
Yeah.
On impervious area, though, I did have a question on that, you said, David, you said it was reduced, but is it only reduced because of that center parking lot aisle, or is it, or because you take not Building 37?
No, no, it's because of, in the center.
Yeah, we weren't counting.
Okay, just checking.
You know, if you look at the two plans, it's pretty, basically, what we, we thought it would be a nice sort of mixed-use sort of feature to have these sort of street-like things next to the buildings, ultimately couldn't do that, so we ended up with about the same amount of parking, we dropped a lot of circulation area, so we've lost a lot of impervious surface.
Pete, any questions?
No.
Lynn, anymore? Gentlemen, oh.
Yeah, look, you can let them ask, I can go through my notes.
The floor is yours for the moment.
Well, yeah, I'm Bob Carroll, I'm a townie, was a policeman in town for 30 years. What I just wanted to speak about is, when you look at the plans for the parking lot changes, we have a right of way, and of course, we crisscross right through the parking lot. When we get to the point of High Street, this is a dangerous intersection.
When you say parking lot, you're not referring to the parking lot we've been looking at.
No, I'm talking about where the Converse parking lot would be now.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Seven years ago, a young girl coming down High Street from Thondike Street, one of our neighbors, was killed at that location, two other people were injured seriously in the accident. The traffic is coming from High Street, and it's traveling at two greater speed, some of them, I think, they're in a NASCAR race or something, but it's not funny when you get injured. I was injured years ago on a, walking across Main Street, by irony, somebody, the other day, got hit in the same spot I was run over at, but. But what is needed when you design the exits is a stop, either by a light or a sign from High Street to make people stop, because they're not going to stop, they're not going to slow down. And this young lady was killed, and the police report indicated it was by speed. Not to dwell on that, the poor girl's memory, but they do come down that street too fast. So we ask that when you look at the plans, that you work together and you come with a solution to slow down the traffic. Most of us in that development are seniors, that's what it was intended for. And we're not driving recklessly on the road. We're safe drivers, but that traffic pattern is going to change there because it's going to be commerce and it's going to be residential, and so the traffic is going to be throughout the day rather than first thing in the morning and this late afternoon. So we're asking that you, you look at the safety issues there and come up with a good safe solution. That's, that's my comment, and I thank you for your time.
Recall, we talked about the dangers on that thing, and I'm, I'm really concerned about, continue to see people speeding down High Street.
Oh, rude, though, that's not their site.
And speeding up and trying to get across those, that three-way stop that's at the top.
Well, I actually think there's two issues. One is the intersection with Water Street.
Yep.
But Mr. Carroll's right, there's also the intersection with Prescott and the Converse parking lots. And we've actually been looking at more in the context of the master plan when we start to address how we're going to use that drive, and we think that there are things that certainly we can improve all the way along High Street as it goes up to the north into that neighborhood toward Thorndike Street, that I think, right, isn't necessarily specifically addressed in the center lot project, where the loop already exists and we didn't want to change around the curb cuts. And some of that's being improved in the Water Street corner, I believe anyway, through the town's initiative.
I had one thought on the Prescott and High Street area. A traffic circle would be perfect.
But that's, again, that's not their site. I mean, it's public roads.
Well, I understand it is, but they could offer to pay for it.
I mean, I think it's, it'll be, when we get, when we come back for a more significant master plan and address, you know, what we'd like to do with those parking lots and the ball fields and that's out of the site, I think it will be an opportunity to talk about that end of the street. And I, and we've had some discussions with, with Planning Public Works already to say, you know, can we bring this, you know, now that we're doing the lighting on High Street, we're sort of beating up the sidewalks and the curbs anyway, when we come back and fix the street, can we do something that addresses, you know, how wide it is and whether there should be other crossing areas that are safer?
Yeah, it's, I recognize it's town property, and, but the town's got an interest in the safety of its citizens, too. And I think that's subject that you could get the neighborhoods involved in the thing and create a, a voting block to, to get something done there.
On the grading on building 37 where it's removed, how much grading are you going to do? Are you infilling that, or is that, I mean, I know that's a trick.
It's not, it's not a lot of grading. I think some of it is, will be, so the slab is going to be ground on site as fill.
Okay.
So it's concrete gravel, essentially, so that will be some of it. There may be some soil coming on site. There's certainly loam for the, for the actual planning surface would be added. I think that's in the budget we've seen from the landscaper. You know, it's, it's enough to cause it to drain towards the, the pond in the event of a heavy rain, but the expectation is, is that it'll, it'll soak up most of the water that falls on it.
So probably like six inches of fill is what you're talking about? You're going to use the gravel, the concrete?
I, I don't know exactly what that, what the number is, but that would.
You don't know the.
Would not surprise me if it were that.
Elevation, is, are you bringing it up a little bit?
It's on the grading plan, so, which is C-8, I think. So I see, you know, it looks like the high point is 82.5, and it grades down two feet over about 200 feet, so.
But do we know where the, where's that building at now, or is, because it's a little slippery, yeah, that's.
It, it's going to come up as much as two and a half, two and a half, two feet, sorry, two feet in the middle, in the crown.
Okay, so you're bringing it up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, it's coming up, yeah, sorry.
Okay, well, that makes a little bit sense, because that'll slow down any, because the building sort of drops.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The, the sidewalk on the north side or the right-hand side of the page is set at building, or set at or near the finished floor of the buildings on the right, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah.
I think we're in position to, to close this thing and vote.
Just checking to see if the other guy has anything to say.
I think they already, you guys don't have any more questions, do you?
What's that mean?
You don't have any more questions or comments?
No, just in case they want to talk to us.
Okay, sure.
Um, yeah, I think I'm done.
Okay. So let's, if somebody could make a motion to close the public hearing, and then we can take up our decision.
We'll close the public hearing.
Okay, motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for the modification. And then everybody has the decision and the, also the old decision, so.
I would make a recommendation, we made this based on the downtown overlay, but the downtown overlay is now the downtown overlay, Sub-District A, is if you guys can let me do a run on this, and we can vote on it as amended, and I'll send out a draft, everybody, because we need to change it, because we made the Sub-District A after the first modification, first cycle plan, so we should pick some stuff up.
Let's, I think there's probably a few edits that you can make, but let's, I think some of the other stuff we can probably still run through.
Okay, we decide, yeah.
You know, I mean, I think you just clean up the procedural stuff, which is fine. So, yeah, the title and referring, yeah, but I think, let's, let's go into the substance
First paragraph, then we're going to add in, we have to get the parking spaces. Do we have a final on the parking space numbers yet?
Yes.
Okay, so what?
Is it 152?
152. Right here. We have 120, the 149.
Did you take the one out of your packet, Lynn?
No.
I made a few changes today. I put one in your packet.
Yeah, see, that's what's, yeah.
Please don't do that. That's, you know, I, I spent two hours editing this, and then you make changes and don't send it out to us, that's not right. Not right.
I thought their information was after we had the stuff.
Still not right.
Well, else if we do changes, redline them. So, let's see what they are.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, but that would, I think what John said there is, if you make a change, you know, between the initial thing.
And your meeting?
Yeah, just do the red.
Well, you only emailed it out to us this morning, which, and so to make changes in between, it doesn't make sense.
The, the sentence that begins the public hearing was opened on July 21st, and I.
We can strike, I, I had that stricken because we don't usually put that in. That's a language that we've never had before.
And it's on the.
It's on the cover. And I also have the second sentence, all voting members of the planning board were present at the public hearing, we can strike that, we don't put that in.
Yeah, yeah, we don't usually.
And the first paragraph, we want to refer to, we have the parking space, the revised stormwaterage management plans, and we do have revised landscaping and grading plans. And then under finding effects, the proposed demolition of building 37. And do we have.
Which number are you on?
Right here. I have a lot of edits. The proposed demolition, one, two, three, four, fifth sentence.
Yeah.
Proposed demolition, I think we should clarify that, of building 37.
Well, I think, I'd actually like to pull that into a separate one, because I think part of it is, remember, a large part of what we're doing is we're modifying something that's already there, so we have to someplace in this demonstrate that, in fact, this is better than what we had before that's already approved. So you probably want to carve that out as a separate line item. And, you know, the, the whole thing about, let's see, you know, that there's less, you know, less pervious surface and that the new plan is clearly structurally sound and safe and everything, so, yeah, I mean, because that's ultimately what we're, what we're voting on is, is that that would look better, so, yeah.
David, 37 was built in, because we have it being, it won't impact the historic structures, that was built in the 80s, was it?
In the 90s, actually.
Oh, in the 90s.
I think it was 93, who's, the permit was 93.
Then what's the number that you're at here?
I am at number one.
Number one. In finding effect?
Yes.
And what's?
Compliments is, while we're at it, it should be compliments in the second line, yeah, should be an E there.
And the Converse building was an original building, right?
Yes, the tall part, the five-story Converse building dates back to the teens or 20s, I think, and the lower part of the Converse building was later, maybe the 70s.
So we want to add in that the impervious area in the center aisle, center parking lot, I don't know how we want to word that, is reduced.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean, it's, it's, the new design is superior to the old one because it provides for less impervious surface, more green, you know, more amenities, and safer, too, as we found out.
So you're down at item four now?
Yeah, I mean, the thing about it is, if you look at this, most of these are the same ones that were in the last one, so you almost have to pull the ones that are out from the last one.
I tried to leave everything the same except for where I found references to the building. I made sure it's at the building in its entirety, and just, I, I inserted revised parking lot, and again, I hadn't known the actual number, so I left most of it identical to the previous one.
Which is tough to do, because.
I know.
Par. And it's. Paragraph seven, just a typo, open a view to Osgood Pond instead of Osgood Pond.
Yeah, but that was in the draft, it wasn't in the file. That's what happens, working off a draft. We want to strike 10, that pertains to the original one, it really doesn't pertain to this, because we're going to keep the.
Yeah. There's a question mark.
I do have a question. In number nine, I had, like I said, I talked with the applicant today to confirm the, the reference, this, the number nine was the same as the original, and it talked about a waiver in, where those question marks are?
Yeah, but.
And I didn't know if you wanted to, I assume that large number of requiring 1,000 spaces is due to kind of the overall master plan.
No, I mean, all we're doing is modifying an existing decision, so anything that we, you know, we really want to highlight just the things that have changed, not what is the same, because they're all moved, because we're not changing any of those, and we already approved them.
So is that, you want that to stay in then?
I don't, it shouldn't even be in there, I mean, because it's irrelevant.
Well, we are changing the parking space again, so we should have just something, the parking space is going to increase by.
Right.
What, three.
Three spots, yeah. Well, then, then we can't do reduction of parking spaces.
Right, that's true.
We, we increased the parking, we also reduced the buildings by 37,000 square feet or something, so the ratio, we might, we're more in compliance than we were.
Yeah, so maybe you say something to that effect, yeah.
I, I think we keep it simple, we just say the parking spaces have increased from the original decision.
In order to satisfy the needs, yeah, yeah.
Sure, you don't want to do this one offline instead of, because I get a lot more edits than.
Well, just, I want to get at if there's any substantive issues that you have that, you know.
Right here, okay. Do you need any night work because of those underground utilities?
Not expecting to.
Okay, I wasn't sure, because I, I had those telephone poles to nowhere and stuff, those don't go underground there anywhere.
No, they don't cross the site where we're working. There's one underground electrical transmission line, but I think we're going to avoid it, hopefully, when we dig.
Yeah, so, the issues revolving the poles, the overhead wires on the site is, so, different, larger, longer saga.
One of the things, by the way, you ought to say, is someplace in here is that the existing conditions of the prior decision remain, except for what's explicitly.
It's in there, it's in the chapter, the header special conditions, number two.
Okay.
Yeah, that.
That means some of the other items that weren't pertinent to tonight still remain in effect, so.
Yeah, I'd be tempted to say it's something like the board recognized that the project would be completed multiple phases, and this represents one of those phases.
Okay.
Or words to that effect.
Are you okay with the number four on that page, the bonds being in place already?
But I, we don't need to increase the bond, because it's a bond, this is a modification, but we do need to have different language saying that, you know, the performance bond is for both, covers both decisions and won't be released till both decisions are met. It's going to be, it's going to be the original decision and this one, we're not, we're not taking a bond for this decision.
No.
But we can't just say zero, because then they don't have to meet this decision to get their money back.
No, you, you, you basically say that.
The bond in place for, from January 6, 2015.
Cover, yeah.
Conditions.
Yeah.
Cover both decisions.
Yeah.
And. We also want to add in under number five, we're going to add in our construction monitor language that we came up with in the construction monitor form.
In the prior start of construction, number five? That's not the same?
No. We have a construction monitor form. And we had some new language on that, so.
Yeah, the sentence is pulled out, yeah.
So. You've already submitted an O and M plan, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, really, we really don't even need that in there, because this is just a modification, so we can strike all of seven.
Okay. There is a modified O and M plan, obviously, as a result of the different layout, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can leave that in, so, has been provided. We can strike nine, no caution tape.
No.
Actually, I'd like to see that, sort of around the whole building.
There will be, there will be fence around the whole thing.
I know, you'll have to fence it in, but, no, I want to see the yellow tape.
Okay, well, we'll do what we can.
No, we can.
I want to go buy a roll of yellow tape tonight.
What, where will you dispose of the debris from building 37?
We trust. To, depending the debris, so there's steel, there's brick, some of the concrete will be crushed on site and used as fill.
The expectation is, is that the concrete block and the, and the slab are sufficient, of sufficient quality that can be used as crushed fill on site.
Do we have in here anything specified as to what they do with the debris?
We've never done that, we don't care.
Oh, really?
Well, ConCon certainly cares.
Now, you could dump it in the lake.
No, that's their reason, no, they, no, they can't dump it in the lake, but we don't, it's disposing it off-site and disposing it on-site, they have to follow law.
They have to follow the law. They have to follow the law.
They have to get a demolition permit from the building inspector and, like I said, the one thing that the people wanted in the other demolition project that we're working on was for them, to identify where they're going to stockpile when the demo, because it does take time to remove it, so you will see it for a while.
I think that's true, I think there's a construction management plan that's required by the building department.
I've never sat in on this big a demolition, and this is, this is a pretty good-sized one.
Yeah, they're going to take it down, sort it, and truck it out.
Fortunately, it's very large, so we can use its own footprint to finish our sorting.
Just... Have you thought about the path the trucks will follow?
Yes, actually, they're, we've already started to work out the methodology.
Right, to downtown?
But I think we should give them an opportunity when they're really staging or lined up with the contractors to come back and, and work with the building department or helping officials with it.
I, I think you're going to do it at it and send us...
Yeah, I think this... The last few pages were all very similar to the previous one.
Yeah, but this is a modification, and it's also, like I said, we changed our bylaw since this was written. That's why we're, it is, we no longer, this, they are no longer part of the downtown overlay, they're part of the sub-district A now. So it's a little bit different. So doing a modification, it's like doing a modification on the watershed when it's not a watershed property, it's a conservation property. It's a different bylaw now, so, so we just want to clean it, we just want to clean it up a little bit.
I don't think there'll be too much.
No, it's not, it's not too much, it just, yeah, let's just fix it so we have a plate for going forward.
You guys okay with where we are, so why don't we, well, then, why don't you make the motion to approve the plan as amended and that you will send the final copy to the, to everyone for...
I'll make a motion to approve the downtown overlay, sub-district A, special permit modification as amended, and it will be distributed to all the board members.
Okay.
Prior to adoption.
Prior to adoption, yeah.
Yeah, kind of, prior to filing, so, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good, thank you guys. Okay, moving. Okay, moving right along, water quality research, what do we got here?
Oh, you don't miss me.
I'm excited.
Okay, I met, since we last met, and you wanted to keep, keep this going. I met with Julie, I want, I don't want to say her name wrong, Greenwood G. Gilio, at the water department, water treatment plant. And she and I talked about what kind of data she has available to her pre-treatment, because you guys wanted to know a little bit more about the water quality pre-treatment.
Would you guys find, having the discussion outside, because we're on TV, with just us, I wouldn't mind, but since we're on TV, you might not want everybody to hear your sidebar conversation. I mean, because you know everybody in North Andover watches these things on TV, it's, it's the hottest show around. Thank you for coming today, I appreciate the insight and the historical information. We're going to have to, have to join the community preservation committee so you could tell us everything about the old buildings and everything.
Thanks, Seth.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, so anyways, I asked her a couple of basic questions, are there pollutants of concern that are measured prior to treatment? And the answer is yes, and they've been measuring it since they had the treatment plant. Are there noticeable trends with these pollutants over time, there are? We'll need to final, kind of more focus our search in what we want. And are there specific areas of concern around the watershed that could be researched further? And she indicated there are. We talked about different topics of review, different, you know, trends that she finds and, you know, one of the biggest ones, I think, that isn't going to be shocking to all of you, is the nitrate and phosphorus that ends up in the water quality from landscaping. That's probably one of the bigger things they treat for, and it's just, it's always been, you know, a problem and they, they treat for it. So obviously, your drinking water is safe, but there are times in different years, depending on rainfall and, and, you know, other circumstances where it becomes more expensive in your community. And she said there's another level of treatment that is costly. And then every several years, there's a very large retrofit and treatment at the plant that's costly. That large treatment should go on a, we'll say, a three- to five-year cycle or a five-to-eight-year cycle. But when that gets reduced to a three-year cycle, it's, it's a lot more costly for your community. So there's kind of the impact.
Did she give you a name of that treatment, is it Terser Tari?
No, there's, well, one of them is copper sulfate treatment. That was kind of the one, the first one I talked about, that's probably, you know, it's a, it's something that, you know, they do more frequently, but it does cost money. And again, it's, it's to combat those pollutants. The other ones, when they have a carbon filter overhaul of the filtering equipment. And that's, like I said, more on the five-to-eight-year span. But if it creeps down in the four, three-to-five-year range, it's costing your community more. So it was certainly good to learn those things. She and I came up with a couple of areas that we're going to kind of continue to research and kind of focus some information for you to bring it back to your board, to have a better presentation of what, you know, she's got a lot of data available to her, I was kind of learning about what she has. And then I want to refine the focus so we can get a presentation for you so that you can get some of that information I know that you're looking for. But I think one of the, one of the areas actually was kind of interesting was fecal coliform from animal waste that they do notice spikes after a rainfall. And, you know, it's, some things are natural and some things are not. So she's kind of, you know, tracking that pollution source. And then when you, when you track something, you can then begin to develop a solution to address it.
So how long more are you on there, is there significant animal waste?
The, the dog park. You might benefit from a fenced-in dog park that has a waste treatment plan, so the dogs can run free, but you can contain it and clean it, and then everybody can enjoy the hill and the freedom for the dogs. That might be a great solution for community scout groups, something like that. And she does notice a spike, so, in her testing. That's just one, one little nugget of information. But anyway, she and I agreed, we're going to kind of, one thing she's going to look into is kind of lawn care companies or treatments. I know you have organics and you guys put these deed restrictions on property owners to use organics, but fertilizer is organic. And there's kind of, there's probably different tiers of what works great and medium. And I don't know what people use in your community, but I'm sure there's better than others, there's some that are better for your environment. So she and I might look into that to learn more about what's happening in your subdivisions and your neighborhoods. Because I think that's the biggest pollutant source. So anyways, I began...
So what I'd like to ask for is that we have DPW and the water treatment here to give us the presentation. And the presentation should be on the major indicators. Nitrites, phosphorus, dissolved oxygen, algae.
And locations.
And locations.
She has, and that's...
And, and so, you know, I think the broader discussion is, you know, about fenced-in dog runs and types of fertilizer is, is all a very good part of the conversation. But I would like to ask that we focus on asking DPW to come before the board and give us the long-term trend. We're really not interested in the test results last week. We're interested for the major indicators, and they're very clear. Nitrate, phosphorus, dissolved oxygen, algae, and the locations for both the lake and the tributary. The testing has been done, I think, since shortly after the watershed rules went into effect in eighty-five, so early nineties. What is the long-term trend since that time from the early nineties forward? Come and show us.
And if, if that could be on charts by location?
She does, they have, so they have like eighteen testing locations, you know, point A, B, you know, one through twenty. And they're, they're, some are, you know, in different tributaries, but you'll see the testing locations. And that's what they've been doing, like you said, she has the data, it's a matter of refining what it is you want to ask.
Well, I, I think we've been clear about what we've asked. What is the long-term trend for the major indicators? Those are not subject to debate. And by location. I think we've been very clear on that.
And is there any pattern?
That's what we mean by trends.
Is there any pattern by the time of the year?
Right, so that, that should all be evident in the...
Yeah, well, that would be a third dimension to the thing. Because, you know, to me, that's important, because that would catch the runoff from the fertilizer periods.
Well, they're testing it monthly, you'll see it by month, by month, you'll see the trend.
Yeah, that's exactly. Is it possible that we could try to set a goal of when we'd like this to come before the board?
Well, one is I'd like to see the data prior so we can make it, always make an educated decision, because I don't, and at least a week prior to having a meeting, not an hour or three hours prior to a meeting.
We want to target which meeting we'd like to ask for this to occur?
When's it, probably October, I'd say, September, give them two months to get it all together.
I don't know how far away are they from...
I kind of wanted to hear a little more again tonight and give you some feedback and then we can...
This is the same exact thing we've been asking for, this, this isn't new, we ask exact, Peter asks exactly, this is the last two meetings.
And it's, and we'll check with her work schedule to see when it is that they can compile that data.
Let's see, we're in July, I'm on September, so end of September, beginning of October.
Great, that was... And I, you know, if, if there are questions that come up in, you know, on the part of the DPW, the water department, you know, what about this, what about that? If the board desires, I'd be happy to provide some feedback so we can keep it moving.
I'll, I'll make a motion that Peter heads and he shares any subcommittee to be the contact person.
Happy to do it.
Second.
Okay.
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
Peter's czar.
So watershed violation updates?
Yes.
We had a clearing happen at seven seventy-seven Great Pond Road, the lot in yellow. And you'll see there's a lot of trees by the driveway and a pool. The pool is a frog pond that's hatching a lot of little tadpoles right now. The fellow was cleaning, taking down some trees, and he was very genuine in saying, his wife said, "Don't you think you should call somebody first?" And so, lo and behold, Conservation Commission had noticed it anyways. And we've been talking with him, he will be coming in for a watershed special permit. He would like to fill in and remove that pool, he would like to do some re-grading. You can see the wetland, that's part of his home and property, so he'll be coming before us.
Can you expand this out so we can see where it is relative to the lake, please?
Oh, oh, that way.
Okay, got it.
So it's seven seventy-seven Great Pond Road.
Whereabouts is that, terms of cross streets or?
It's halfway between...
Okay, bridle path, okay, no, fine, fine, yep.
So anyhow, that's, that will be coming before us, I, hopefully this fall. Any questions or concerns or...
Is it for a special permit for clearing that's already occurred?
I think topography, I think he's going to want, he's taken the trees down, so he's going to be re-grading and he's going to fill in that pool or do something that...
Has already taken the trees down?
Yes, yes, it was noticed after the fact, so...
So, you know, just, just as a note, there does seem to be a, you know, number of occurrences where within the watershed, actions are taken and then after that, come for the permit. I'm not quite sure what the solution is to that.
We asked last month, last meeting to have on the agenda where it's not on hit, on the agenda, to put that watershed notification on the agenda and hold it on the agenda.
That's water quality.
No, it's not. Water quality research is the research on the actual water. The watershed notification was the postcards that...
With that...
It's not started, so it's two separate items and it's in the minutes as two separate items. So it's clearly two separate items. And so it's not on the agenda. So, and that should be going out, we need to get a draft and we need to get it done now, it's been almost a year. So, and that, that only has to go out to people in the watershed district, so...
I think it was a pretty good starting point, that draft.
Yeah. And if there's any questions on that, you can ask me on that, because I, I've been, I was reviewing it with Matt on that part. So let's put it on the agenda for next meeting and hold it on the agenda until it's done. And I think we should also target that we should, unfortunately, by the time we get it done, it's now, the summer's going to be over when ninety percent of the work happens, you know, so, but we still should, we can send it out every year.
Get a mail around this spring, maybe it'll prevent...
No, we want to get a mail out this year and then, so that, and then redo it in the spring probably, but let's get it done.
The other, it's not really a violation here, we have the, the mitigation. This is for one, one-one-one-six Great Pond, they did some clearing and these are the plantings. There, I think you had, this was where you were talking about the difference between shrubs and trees. And so Jennifer had gone out and sent back some pictures maybe about a week ago. That, I guess that's a, maybe more of a path, and the shrubs are around it. Some more shrubs there, if you can see that. And there's, at least you can see a quantity in that one, they are small.
Photos are very helpful, thank you.
So anyways, that's what's happened over at that site.
So if you want lake views, you just take down the trees and you have to put up an, an eight-inch little shrub?
So I happened to see Jennifer today, and I may, may have made that simple a comment. And she did say that, yes, they are small, but that the nature of these shrubs, they will grow to height, but it's going to take years. You know, the alternative, of course, is, you know, you, you have to pay for larger plantings and they are more expensive. But, you know, this, I think, is done, but, you know, I, I think, one of, one of my concerns going forward in situations like this is you have a remediation for environmental aspects, which is critical. But what message does it send to other watershed residents that, you know...
Exactly, there's no publicity to this thing?
Well, well, but, but there is publicity to other residents that, cut the trees, plant some low bushes, and you're free and clear.
That's right.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a little, you've got to be careful because, you know, ultimately, you, I, I, I mean, it's a sense of balance, because we live, you know, we live in a free society and you don't want people ratting on their neighbors and, you know, and you don't want to do something that's overly punitive. I mean, the land does belong to these people and, you know, arguably, the, the risk you want to be careful is that you don't end up becoming so draconian that you stimulate a backlash. And that's, that's where the sense of, I don't have a problem going back and saying, that's pitiful, do twice or three times as much. I mean, a certain amount of, I think if people egregiously do this stuff, you should come at them reasonably hard and then maybe back away a little bit after a while. So with something like this, I, I don't mind going back and saying, that's, that's not enough, do more, because it was a pretty severe violation. But at some point, I mean, you're never going to get a one-for-one.
But see, then I, I'd prefer to say to, you know, you're giving the people who break the rules a better opportunity than the people who follow the rules. And let's say, okay, you can clear twenty percent of your trees and here's the replanting plan you can do.
Well, no, but I mean, at some, but at some point, you know, you got to be, you, 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 you got to do things in relative proportion. Like, in this case, first of all, I don't think, if what we're talking about, I don't think they clear-cut this property. But let's put in context what they did, it wasn't...
Well, it was clear-cutting the point.
Yes.
And on the order of twenty-plus mature trees completely cut, not in the view of this photo, but in the portion of the property that sticks out as a peninsula into the lake, on the order of twenty mature trees completely clear-cut, it's just not shown in the view of these photos. And these replacement shrubs are not at the location... And these replacement shrubs are not at the location of where the clear cutting occurred.
Well, yeah, then come, then say it's unacceptable. But, I mean, my point is that you're not going to be able to go back to this guy and say, "You took down twenty mature trees. I want you to replant twenty mature trees in the same spot."
And I'm not suggesting...
But I, I have feeling, I think it's perfectly okay to say that this replanting plan's a joke. Do, you know, three X, five X or something, you know, that doesn't offend the consciousness in terms of proportionality.
See, that's, that's what I prefer to say, okay, if you come before us, we're going to do a two X planting, but if you don't come before us, we're going to make you do a four X planting. I'd like to have something like that. Don't, don't punish the people who do it right.
Correct.
I, yeah, I mean, and...
But that's, that's what we're doing though.
Well, no, no, we're not doing anything. We have, what do you want to go back and tell them? I mean, the, the point ends up being is...
Oh, I know, but we're saying, no, not this particular one, in general though, if they come before us, you know, that, you know, we don't let them cut down any trees.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, that's true and they're not supposed to. But I mean, to some degree, since in the, my recollection over the last, you know, seven or eight years, ten years, that we've had one over by Rolling Ridge that was, I think, fairly egregious. And one, not this one, but another one over by Brook School that was reasonably egregious.
I'll say, I remember three more too.
And I don't remember really very many more beyond that. And that...
Look at Bonnie Lane. It's, you know, unbelievable, the clear cutting, all of the understory of those trees and the, and on the shore.
But you've got to remember Bonnie Lane was, that's a thirty-year-old subdivision.
Not, not at the time of construction. This is clear cutting of the understory. And if you go look at, you can see the cutting from the lake shore.
Recently.
Recently.
Well, then why aren't we doing anything? I mean...
Well, that's, that's what we're talking about is we have, we don't have any authority besides giving them a violation, you know, but there's no teeth to it and then...
Well, no, there is, because you can, you can threaten them with fines.
Well, we can't find...
John, I, I...
Well, the building...
I, I agree with your earlier point about balance and I hope you don't think that I don't, because I, I do agree with balance. But I, I think Lynn has hit the point here that sort of the message I think we're inadvertently sending is if you come before us, the answer is no. If you don't come before us and cut, this is the answer. And, you know, there's no consequence here. And I also take your point, private property owners, but, you know, private property owners with well-established watershed protection rules that affect every single person in the town. So if you are a private property owner on the shore of the lake, your neighbors are every single person who lives in this town. And the rules are clear. So, you know, I, I'm not viewing it as egregious.
I, I agree absolutely with you. And it's the same argument that I would make is my, my point ends up being is you want to do it in a way that ends up optimizing the result. And because if you, if you misplay your hand, you could come across as being obtrusive and...
Well, I think we are now because we say, "No, you can't cut down the tree because you're on the lake." I would rather say, "Okay, well, let's come up with a more reasonable thing for the people who want to do it the right way and say, 'Okay, well, you can't, you know, work with the conservation, work with the water quality and say, 'Okay, we're going to get a deed restriction on the property by, you know, we're going to get the right fertilizers used. We're going to get some trade-offs, try to get them in here, maybe with a lower cost option on, unless it's..."
Well, no, you're right, but remember, I mean, it's, if you think about it, people intuitively understand when they, they require a building permit. And people, you know, it's not to say, a lot of people, in fact, I am sure, an awful lot of people have not gotten building permits when they should have, which is, you know, arguably, the building inspector might be as equally outraged about that. But the, the, the point ends up being at some level, people intuitively view this as a lesser sort of thing. And the, the idea is, you know, and I think doing the, you know, the, the, the letter or whatever is, is a useful thing, but to think that you, you know, you're going to get people to basically very tightly follow the rules just because of that, it requires more than that. I mean, maybe we should do some school stuff, you know, get kids to, not so much to be a conscience for their parents. I mean, there's a lot of different things you're going to do, but if you ultimately want to educate people, it's a broad education thing and I think just a one-time shot at something isn't going to necessarily...
Oh, no, it's not a one-time shot. And I'm thinking...
Do we have any definite data that says that this causes damage to the drinking water?
That's why we're asking...
Well, that's, I understand that.
For data and trend and are there anomalies and what causes that?
Yeah, I mean, you may not find, I mean intuitively broadly put, the more you deserve, the bigger problem you have. But that's a little bit, that's also part of the reason why you'd want to go overboard.
But if we can, if, if we have data that says that this is destroying the drinking water, then I don't care if people are upset. And I don't think anybody would, I think people who drink the water would be upset.
Yeah, I, I don't think you're going to find anything that's literally that dispositive. You won't. It'll be far more amorphous than that. I mean, you know...
Then it's, it's...
The only way you're going to do it is like back in the days when we had a lot of construction in town and there was erosion, well, you know, you would see dirt going into something and you'd say, "Oh, there's a problem there."
You'd see a muddy river, dry, yeah, totally. So, but I, I don't, but I think, you know, if we want, there's two things. One is for minor projects. I do think we have, we're too strict in all honesty. And we have to, we, if someone has five trees, we have to come up with a way to make it easy for them to come before us, otherwise...
Well, I actually think if you look at the bylaw, you could actually just go to the planner and the planner or somebody else will, you don't even have to come to the planner board.
I mean, we, with, with the pool, it wasn't the lake, but it was the watershed. And we enabled that, right?
Yeah, but yeah, exactly. But, but it doesn't say that, I, I don't think people get that impression from the way the rules were written, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I think we should probably define it better. And actually, I'd sent out an email saying that I think we should look at some of the things like, we should have, bonds shouldn't be so arbitrary, we should get some schedule of past bonds and everything like that. And we should have, we should come up with a bond price range, you know, it's going to be from this to this range, you know, minor to major and sort of get a little bit of a schedule. Because I guess the, you know, most of the watersheds, I think we've been doing four or five thousand. And maybe, you know, maybe four or five thousand is too much for a small project for a homeowner, you know, is maybe...
Well, then you're going and you're going past just some minor, two actual projects.
Right, so, yes, but we should, but we should probably have a schedule of a range so people know and everything like that and have some better, you know, and I'd like to put that on the agenda as something that we work on, you know, for the next...
Well, we're right and we should change, we should do the planning board rules and regulations, which we haven't done in a long time.
I, I agree, yeah.
So John, part of my concern here is that this property looks out onto the property you referred to earlier as one of the egregious ones by Rolling Ridge, which is actually on Sailway. From this property, you can see it. And you can see, you know, tremendous clear cutting, you know, apparently no remediation that is at least visible. Now this is clear cut, not all of it, but the portion that was directly on the water. Now this spring, in view of both properties, is a third property which has lopped off maybe two, three hundred feet of mature trees, lopped off all the tops, which, you know, give a tremendous vista from a newly built house. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure that's something that is valued, but it, it is, you know, if, if...
No, you're right, but I mean, my feeling is that if, if there's an egregious violation, we should go after them very aggressively. And that's why, just getting back to this thing, because it's, it is getting late, is I would go back and say, "This remediation plan's a joke. Come back with a real plan. This is not anywhere close to mitigating the impact." I mean, what else could we do?
Well, no, I, I think that would be, you know, just for, I, I am not suggesting that we require someone to replace, you know, a fifty-foot mature tree, but I can go to a nursery and buy a tree that's eight or ten or twelve feet high and plant it as opposed to an eighteen-inch version.
Yeah, and Christine, you probably should talk to Jennifer because, you know, and get her thoughts a little bit on this, but this is, yeah, it's a mitigation plan, given the amount of stuff that they did, it is a bit of a joke.
Would you, I mean, I know they submitted a plan and the, you know, Conservation Commission or, and you might have approved that plan and planted it.
We would approve anything.
Okay, so that was, that, that was a Conservation Enforcement Order.
It's just typically we use the Conservation Commission as our agent on some of these things, just because they tend to be out there a little bit more and they tend to be a little bit more familiar with some of these things. But it doesn't mean we abrogate our responsibilities. So I would say this is, you know, I would give her the message that this is clearly lacking and not sufficient. And maybe we should bring the person back in again to get an update.
Did we have this, this person in?
Yes.
Yes, they were here.
The landscaper was here.
The landscaper. Okay, he's the guy who showed us the picture.
I think the owner was here, but didn't speak.
Yeah.
I'll discuss with Jennifer and I'll see if I can draft a letter on your behalf that the majority of you are not satisfied with the mitigation plantings and to see if the owner would be willing to, you know, install a little more landscaping, preferably trees.
Well, it's not that they will, they will. We don't accept this and we still think there's a violation, so...
I mean, when I did reforestation work, we were, we were three to four times thicker than that, but just...
Yeah.
No, I, I think one of the positive things here in looking at the earlier photos is they have marked the no disturb zone. That's positive. I think they've marked them with wooden stakes, so I don't know how long they'll be there. But, you know, marking the zone, that, that's great to see.
Yeah. Yeah, so... Okay.
We have minutes. I would make a motion that we table the minutes and ask the town planner and the assistant planner to make it more of a synopsis. There's a lot of direct quotes in there again.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with that because we discussed the last time to get away from the verbatim.
Right.
They're still verbatim.
She went back and forth, I think, a couple of times and struggled with them. So you'd rather have more of a summary.
We were very clear on that to you.
Yeah, no, I know, I just...
And you are ultimately, you can't blame Bonnie for everything. You're ultimately in charge of the minutes. Matt used to take the minutes on, when he was only one person in this position and he did fine taking the minutes.
Okay, good point. Okay, do we have anything else? So do we have a motion?
Well, actually Lynn asked for one item to be on the agenda, well, two actually. And we just talked about one, kind of planning board rules and regs and getting that, getting back to a fee schedule. And I think you talked about it a couple of times tonight. So that will probably come back on the agenda in the administrative section next time. And you also asked about a solar bylaw in your email. And I, I asked Eric Cifore, our director, to contact Lynn because I didn't know if, at what point you wanted to talk about solar where the project is still before the zoning board. So I asked him to address that with you and I don't know if he called you or not.
Yes, they're two independent things. I mean, we have to start now if we want to change something for next year's annual meeting because it does take a while, so we'll start, you can put that on the agenda for next, next meeting too, so...
Okay, so I just wanted to confirm if he did do that and that's why it wasn't on there, Lynn.
All right, are we ready to...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.